It is 6:30 on February 11th, 2025, and I am calling this Bastrop City Council meeting to order. We are going to start out with our pledge of allegiance, which is going to be presented by Yvani Monroy and Andrew Sanders, who are both in the Cedar Creek Intermediate School Choir. I asked them if they would sing, but we're going to get pledges instead. Turn this way. My pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Okay. Give them a hand. We will be led in our invocation by Mr. Bob Long, City of Bastrop Police Chaplain.
Please join me in prayer. Father God, as we come before you today, we come with gratefulness in our heart. We want to thank you for everything you've done for us individually, as families, and as a community. And our hope and our trust and our faith is that you're going to carry us forward in the days ahead with a growth that is good for everyone. Give this council the wisdom from above to make the right and righteous decisions that will lead to a better Bastrop. We pray for all those, the city manager and all those that work for the city. May you give them your wisdom and knowledge and discernment to do what's right so that we can live peaceable and quiet and enjoy life in this community. Now, Lord, we're grateful to live here. We're grateful to play here. We're grateful that we can pray here, and we pray today in Jesus' name. Amen.
Can you show that photo for a moment? I'm going to do things just slightly out of order. I'm going to start here with the first part of Item 6A, which is Mayor Protem's report. Bastrop lost two of our city's family members last night. Cynthia Taylor Clemmons, everyone called her Rose, standing there next to me in that photo, and Gerald Jones. I met them at Doc Jackson's birthday party this year, and there's a lot of people in our town, in this room, watching online, that are mourning their loss tonight. And so I wanted to honor them, and I wanted us to have a moment of silence. We are going to start our meeting with Item 4, Executive Session. We have two items. 4A, City Council shall convene in a closed executive session pursuant to Texas Government Code Section 551071 and 551072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a land license agreement at the Rusty Reynolds Fields. 4B, Texas Government Code Section 551071 and 551072 to seek the advice of legal counsel regarding a possible purchase of property near Walnut and Martin Luther King Drive. It is 6:35, and council is in executive session. It is 6:54. We are back from executive session, and we are taking no actions. So we'll move on to Item 6A, Mayor Protem's report. First of all, I want to start off by saying that Mardi Gras was a huge success here in Bastrop. Some of our downtown businesses set all-time sales records, so it was a big success. I want to express a heartfelt thanks to Kathy Danielson and her team, Main Street Manager Michaela for some of the creative prizes they gave out for shopping in the Main Street businesses that day. And so that drove business and drove some sales. It was really nice. Public Works for, frankly, everything because they set up, tear down, and make us look good every single time. Special thanks to our friends from Evangeline Parish in Louisiana. They came out in force and helped us kick it off and have an authentic event. And then a congratulations to Boggy Bayou Festival for winning the gumbo cook-off for two years in a row. Unfortunately, the groundhog saw his shadow on Groundhog Day, so that means this council meeting will last for six more weeks. I was honored to be the master of ceremonies at Farm Street Opry this last Thursday. It was a great show. The singers, I mean, some of the best we've had. Real thrilled with that. And a quick reminder to all you lovebirds out there, it's Valentine's Day this weekend, so don't forget. I want to tell you a little bit about our agenda today. I worked with the city manager to optimize a few things. One of the items you'll notice is that the words codification and severability are nowhere to be found on these pieces of paper. They may very well still be inside the packets and the things that are the legal jargon behind what we do, but it's not needed to be in the actual agenda language. So we've taken out some of that legalese that doesn't need to be there. We've also, we're not going to read the consent agenda unless there is an item that has an ordinance in it. So our town charter requires that ordinances be read twice in two separate meetings. And so if we're passing an ordinance on the consent agenda, we will read it, but the remaining items, we will just simply pass them as is. And so tonight, we have no ordinances on the consent agenda, so we will just simply pass the consent agenda without spending the five minutes reading the dozen things that are typically there. And also, I've reviewed our rules of procedure, and they give the chair of our meetings a flexibility with the phrase that "I may ask the city secretary for a roll call vote." So the word "may" means "I may not as well." And so we're going to do all of our votes by voice vote, the way that we have to kind of move things along faster and just see if we can't get out of here sooner. So that's all I have, so I'm going to pass this off to Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. Good evening, Bastrop. So yes, the Mardi Gras weekend was a blast. I was in and out of downtown all weekend. Parking was insane, but we made it happen. Everyone had a good time. So thanks to everyone Mayor Protem has mentioned for all of your hard work in making that happen. Don't want to leave out Carlos with Toyota for kicking it off for us. And then the ball was beautiful as well. So it was just a really fun weekend, lots of music, great dancing. Thank you all for your hard work. Some library board updates. The library staff is working on their annual work plan as well as a strategic five-year plan to remain in compliance regarding accreditation with the Texas State Library and Archives Commission. But they also are very excited about doing the strategic plan because they have needs with the growth that we're experiencing. And I'm probably going to mention this as long as I'm up here while we're working on the comprehensive plan and keep the library in mind in terms of what their needs are to handle the growth. Because remember, they're handling the county as well, and they're outgrowing the little building that they're in. I want to take a moment to mention my friend Rose, who passed away yesterday. Rose and I talked Sunday, laughed about the Super Bowl. She texts me Monday morning, as she often does, to tell me good morning, and by the time I got home, she was gone. I want to send a prayer to the family and let you all know that I'm thinking of you all and Gerald's family. It's a terrible loss for our community. She was the kindest person. She was the friend that, while everybody else was talking about you, she was calling you to see if you were okay. I'm hoping that for her service, the city can work with the family, HEB, longtime employee there, they loved her, to write a proclamation for her service. She will be sorely missed in this community. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilperson Lee. Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you, Mayor and Protem. And also, I just want to, I want to thank you for the moment of silence for my classmate, Rose. Rose and I, we started first grade together. We were friends for 58 years, and she was one of the brightest stars you would ever know. Rose wasn't just the life of the party, she was the party. Her biggest love was her family and her friends and her church, and she will be greatly missed by this community. So I would like to encourage everyone, please hug someone tighter tonight. Tell someone that you love them, because we don't know what's going to happen. So, in memory of Rose, please do that. Also, I'd like to say, in honor of AZ Taylor Morton, on the 22nd of this month, there's going to be a program at the Hampton Inn from 11:00 to 1:00 honoring her. She was the first African American, the only African American to serve as treasurer of the United States. We'll do a proclamation tonight on that, too. So mark that on your calendar for the 22nd of February. And on a lighter note, our Lady Bears basketball team won district last week, and last night they won by district in Maynor against Weiss. So that means they're going to play Thursday, and they're going to play in Brenham against Fort Ben Marshall, who's a pretty fierce team. We played them in football, too. So they're a pretty tough team, but our Lady Bears are pretty tough, too. So I know we can do that. 7:00 on Thursday in Brenham. We're going to have a send-off Thursday at some time. It'll be probably on the BISD Facebook page. Check with that on the send-off. I'll be posting it, too. So let's support our students, our Lady Bears, to win this next round. Thank you.
Councilperson Plunkett.
Yeah, y'all know I don't usually have a lot to say, but I do want to, as a downtown business owner, I do want to thank everyone at the city for such a great event with Mardi Gras, particularly as the Main Street Board Liaison. I'd like to thank Michaela, Jennifer Long, and the board for all the effort that they put in to make it such a great event. And yeah, Carlos Clariano at Toyota did an amazing job, too, kicking it off and additionally providing a lot of the culture that is imperative in an event like that. So, thank you.
And aloha to Councilmember Fosser.
Mahalo. That's all.
She just flew back from Hawaii yesterday. Okay, so we're now going to move on to Item 6C, City Manager's Report.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. There are four items listed on the agenda. One of them was an update to the E3 code changes to date. Thus far, we have 19 code amendments to date. They all relate to easing restrictions for residents, not necessarily commercial businesses, things like nonconforming uses, clarifying percentages, adding qualifications or requirements for planning commissioners, just a bunch of cleanup in the code. It was included in your packet, the memo listing each one of the ordinance or resolution numbers making the change. What do we have remaining? Well, there's still a lot to go. On the residential side, many of the residents would have received notice about lot size minimums, setbacks. We're going to revisit the additional requirements for additional dwelling units, and we're going to talk about the uses in residential districts. We're going to talk about the public-private realm and a whole other, especially the water reuse credits on how we help our residents capture and reuse water and give them some kind of credit for that in the zoning uses. And then some overlay districts. We've, we're talking about a historic district overlay, which was previously the Iredelle. We're talking about a downtown district overlay, which would keep a form-based use. And then we've been talking about a black cultural district overlay that encompasses the Emile and this side of town. On the commercial, we're going to talk parking, we're going to talk landscaping, also uses impervious cover alternatives, because we did reduce the impervious cover. And so if there are, there are alternatives to design that would get them to still meet that requirement. We're going to talk about lighting and light pollution, again drainage credits and water reuse credits. Not an exhaustive list. And for the folks listening, what the city of Bastrop has is a form-based code that is not related to use. If, as long as I can't see, it smell, or hear, it's allowed. So there could be incompatible uses next to each other, which then kicks in nuisance ordinances. You have to call the police for noise and parking and those kinds of things. So we're trying to go back and protect some of the integrity of the neighborhoods with lot sizes and uses to make sure neighbors are neighborly and you still have a single-family use in a neighborhood that you bought a single-family use in. So the next item that was requested was the amortization schedule for water, wastewater, and general fund debt. This is just a quick summary. We have a few years of debt to pay off in 2027. Prior debt was a 20-year stretch. Because of the amounts that we're borrowing these days, they're 30-year stretches. So in the water, wastewater, the overall debt is $125 million, with interest set at $69 million. When I go to the general fund debt, 2005, '06, and '07 will all pay off in their respective years, '25, '26, and '27. Overall debt in the general fund is $25.4 million, with interest being $7.9 million. And I just want the council to remember and understand why I paused all the capital improvement projects, because we still have, a lot of these bond issuances still have money in the bank, and we need to get those projects done, and we need to get them completed. Whether or not I can complete them anymore with what was originally borrowed is an unknown, and we're back doing that math and calculation and what is the best use for those dollars. So if there's any changes to what the original borrower was, I will be bringing that back to council. Next, there is the Mardi Gras. You all mentioned it, up 11% from $5,600 to $6,200. And this is actual placer AI data. This is cell phones and credit cards being used in the downtown area in the boundaries that were described. And you can see that we peaked at about noon, noon to 2:00. These were actual people outside of our zip code into Bastrop. In the city manager's report, financial standing, all of our funds are positive except the impact fees, and we do have an ordinance amendment that we're bringing you on 2/25 to close that loophole. And then management projects, we have a site visit on February 28th for the wastewater plant expansion. Completion of the Sinthero wells has been delayed at parts in Austin Water. I'm hoping for a March 7th date. We are completing our transition to OpenGov, and I'm hopeful that that's going to give everybody the needed warm and fuzzy on the financial transparency piece. You'll be able to drill down, all the way down, hopefully, to an actual check or issuance for any vendor, any amount, any project. We continue moving toward the transportation master plan, the wastewater master plan, which we may not go with the incumbent Friesen Nichols. We may be dealing with somebody else, especially depending on how our February 28th visit goes. You have a ride-share program that's in your packet today that you'll be seeing a presentation on. As we build out OpenGov, we're darn near pretty close to building out the budget, so that's going to make things a lot easier. We're getting started on our audit, and then, again, we continue through the development code rewrite. Since we are missing Chief Financial Officer, we do have interviews already scheduled. I will be calling in a third-party consultant to help us get through the audit while staff continues the OpenGov transition and begins the budget. So, any questions?
Councilperson Fosser.
Yes, please. I know we've sent out notices and there are signs all around town, but I just want to remind you guys that the four public meetings concerning the development code changes, the first one is on Monday, February 17th, that's this coming Monday, at the Convention Center starting at 5:00 PM, and then the following Monday at 5:00 PM. Those are the two planning and zoning meetings, and then they'll come to council on March 4th and March 11th at 6:30. So everyone has those in their mail. I just want to remind you, they start on Monday, and I know the agenda packet is usually available, 72 hours. It's probably a ton of information. If it's done any bit ready, any earlier, I would appreciate it going out to the public as much notice as possible, but I know it's a lot of information.
We're hoping to get it out by Thursday evening.
Awesome. So you can start reviewing that information probably Thursday evening to prepare for your comments on Monday if you have comments. My other, I think that's it. Awesome. Thank you. Good work.
Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. City manager, I'm still getting a lot of questions about the issue that I spoke with you over email regarding the water and the piping. Is there a future, can you put that on a future city manager's report to explain that people are confused as to, you know, how much they're going to have to pay to fix their pipes? Is their water safe?
The galvanized piping?
Yes. So if you could put that on a future city manager report. Thank you.
Moving on to Item 6D, Proclamation Honoring AZ Taylor Morton, the first and only African American treasurer of the United States.
This item was submitted by Councilmember Meyer. Would you like to read it? I can certainly read it, but...
Go ahead.
Whereas AZ Taylor Morton, a distinguished public servant and trailblazing leader, was born on February 1, 1936, in Dale, Texas, just miles from Bastrop, and remains a source of pride and inspiration for our community. And whereas despite facing economic and social barriers, she pursued education with determination, graduating from Houston to Litson University and dedicating her life to public service. And whereas AZ Taylor Morton made history in 1977, when she was appointed by President Jimmy Carter as the 36th Treasurer of the United States, becoming the first and only African American to hold this prestigious position. And whereas in her role as treasurer, she oversaw the proclamation and integrity of US currency and worked tirelessly to promote financial literacy, economic empowerment, and inclusion. And whereas beyond her governmental service, AZ Taylor Morton was a passionate advocate for education, civil rights, and community advancement, inspiring generations with her perseverance and commitment to justice. And whereas the city of Bastrop is honored to recognize her extraordinary contributions and lasting legacy, which continues to uplift and empower future leaders. Now therefore I, Sylvie Carrillo Trevino, City Manager of the city of Bastrop, Texas, to hereby honor AZ Taylor Morton for her historic contributions, outstanding leadership, and unwavering dedication to public service, and encourage all citizens to reflect on her enduring impact and commitment to progress. Signed this 11th day of February 2025.
Thank you. We will now move on to Item 7A, Presentation Regarding a Ride Sharing Program for the city of Bastrop.
Good evening, council. Mayor Protem, how are y'all doing?
Well.
All right. So I'm here before you tonight just to kind of put a feeler out to you guys and pretty much gather your thoughts on pursuing the feasibility of entering into a ride-sharing program, or at least researching the possibility of having a ride-sharing program in the city of Bastrop. So currently, the city of Bastrop is served by Carts. Carts, it's our capital area rural transportation system. It has what's called the Carts Now service, and that is an on-demand service. That service functions Monday through Friday from 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM. It does cover most of the city of Bastrop, but not all. For instance, there's some of the city limits here that it can't reach. There's some parts of Pine Ridge that it's not able to accommodate. Previously, Carts...
Do you know why not?
Huh?
Do you know why not?
I talked to Dave Marsh on the phone, and I had mentioned that I noticed it didn't service all of the area, and he didn't really offer an explanation as to the why. I'm assuming maybe topography or some distance challenges. I'm not quite sure. But typically, the on-demand service is able to meet you at your location. So it is a part of the population that is precluded from some kind of transit service. Previously as well, there were the ECabs, and those were the electric cabs that were super cute, that went around town. Those were actually used to offset the Carts Now hours. They did operate on the weekends. They operated Monday through Thursday from 3:00 PM to 9:00 PM. And then they also had some hours on Friday and Saturday from 2:00 to 10:00, and then Sundays, 10:00 AM to 6:00 PM. Unfortunately, though, those are no longer in service. So that's not an option for customers who need some form of mass transit service to service their needs. Now, I also, whenever I reached out to Dave Marsh, I got these stats from him, because I was just kind of curious, you know, what does the average usage look like for the city of Bastrop, for Carts? And so essentially, he told me that they actually provide over 100 trips a day, which I was not quite aware that it was that many. That's a lot, in my opinion. He also stated that most of the places that they visit are places where daily necessities are located, HEB Walmart, where people are going to get food, water, clothing. The other place that he said they visit a lot are medical facilities, so people needing just medical care and/or attention. He was kind enough to send me these stats, and I hope you can see it a little better on your screens, but these stats. And so essentially, just the annual trips for the year were 31,914, and then that's an average of 2,280 trips per month. So this is a highly utilized service that people are using within the city of Bastrop. Now, ride-share. What is that? Essentially, ride-share, it's a partnership. So you have what's called transportation network companies, also known as TNC. That's like the acronym. And essentially, what happens is the city will enter into a partnership with the TNC, think Lyft, think Uber. And what the city agrees to do is subsidize a certain number of vouchers at a certain value for citizens. Now, the process generally looks like we would issue an RFP for consulting firms that have a specialty in negotiating these contracts and setting up this service. There is a lot of legwork that goes in on the backside of it. There's a portal you create, there's usually metrics, a dashboard, all sorts of information that happens. So that's why you need the consultant firm with the RFP to help you just establish the process. After you issue the RFP, and we bring back to you a consultant, if selected, then generally that consultant will help us negotiate a contract with one of the ride-share services, being Uber or Lyft or whomever. And then after that, we kind of come up with a cost schedule, and that cost schedule is going to have the cost of the vouchers, whether it would cost for the city to subsidize, consultant costs, and then usually there's some marketing costs that are programmed into that as well. Some other cities that are utilizing ride-share programs currently are the city of Kyle, Wiley, Flugerville, and actually, the city of Georgetown is presenting theirs for adoption tonight at their city council meeting. I have a conference call scheduled with them next week to kind of talk about what ended up happening at the council meeting that they're having tonight. Across the board, most cities are doing a $10 subsidy for the vouchers, and I did a little, I guess, beta test of like the average cost of a ride for Uber within the city limits, and it's anywhere between $6 to $14. So the other thing to note is that it's a $10 subsidy, and usually there's a certain limit. So it's like 10 vouchers at $10 a voucher. I got GIS to help me with some just rough analytics. This is super preliminary, but essentially, we have an estimated population of 12,286. Most TNCs, like Uber, Lyft, have a policy that precludes a certain age group, right, 18 or older, that you need to be 18 or older to utilize a platform. So assuming that we went with one of those, that would put us at roughly 9,583 people that could qualify for the subsidy. Whenever you do 10 vouchers at $10 a voucher, that's approximately $95,831 for just the subsidy for the ride-share voucher. That doesn't include the consultant or the marketing costs, so it would probably be a little bit in excess of that, but that roughly gets us in. us an understanding of what we could potentially be looking at budget-wise. So essentially, it could be a creative way for us to bridge the gap and to meet some of those needs and/or demands that people have after 7:00 PM on a weekday or on the weekends to reach some of these places such as HEB or Walmart or any medical facilities. And essentially, what I'm looking for tonight is your feedback, your feel on if you're interested in us pursuing the possibility of a ride-sharing program for the city of Bastrop. Or any questions?
Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. So, the only, the only question I have, or concern that I have would be when you, when people are the drivers of Uber and Lyft, they're in it to make money. So my only concern is, I'd like to see some data that supports a small town like ours, because when you look at Georgetown and Flugerville, they're close to Austin, right? So every, and they have a lot more than just driving around Bastrop. And if someone's an Uber or Lyft driver, they're, most times, that's how they're making their money. You do have some that will drive in the evenings and on the weekends, but they're only driving around Bastrop, so don't know if they're getting a good percentage for, from the share to make up the cost for the gas and wear and tear on their cars. So that's, when I was reading through this and comparing it, that's the only thing that I see. I talk to guys all the time that drive, my ones that are driving me around, I typically use Lyft, and they say all the time, sometimes it's just not worth it if you get one ride, and that ride is 15 miles out of town, you spent, you know, gas getting there, you didn't even make up the cost of the gas that you spent. So I think that we need to keep that in mind, because when it comes to people actually signing up to be the Uber drivers, if they're not, because they wouldn't just be an Uber driver for Bastrop, and if they can make more money at the airport, then we may not have drivers. And like, the smallest town that I found that was in our population size had only a need for like three Uber drivers-
Okay.
-in their town, right? So it makes that, if you only have three, and then those three are on a long haul, and then there's no one else in sight, then what are we really benefiting from? So I'd like to focus in on that piece a little bit, the feasibility of actually having drivers-
Okay.
-in the town available during those hours.
Okay, yeah, and so that's easy to do, I can definitely look at different cities that are about our population. I can also reach out to Lyft and Uber and see if they can give me some stats of the number of trips they even offer per day in the city limits. So, yeah, I can come back with that.
Councilmember Lee, we had the data from the little electric, the E-cars, the E-cabs, and most of 90-plus percent of the E-cab use was going to work and immediate, too. The program is geofenced into the city of Bastrop only, so the only, the only fee we would pay is from transfer A to transfer B within the city limits, we wouldn't be outsourcing any further.
See, and that's the thing, though, because some of what I'm hearing in the public is, why don't we have something that can take us to the airport? I'd rather, I mean, if I'm at the airport, I can call an Uber, and it's going to cost me an arm and a leg. So, I mean, we got to keep that in mind, too, because the public is also wanting drivers to take them out of the city limits. So, again, is, if it's, how, how are we benefiting the population as a whole? Because not everybody just wants to stay in the city limits. So do we look at going outside of the city limits and what that looks like? Because again, on average, for a size of our population, what I found, you're looking at three at most.
Okay, yeah, but, and to reiterate, though, truly, these rideshare programs usually are the geofence to the city limits, so it is a within-city limits travel. And it's, the idea is to offset what the E-cab hours were, right? But I can still figure out a, like a defined metric to give you to kind of mull over. Not a problem. Excuse me.
One of the things that, I was contemplating the same question that Councilperson Lee asked, because I was writing down the city names, and like Wiley, hmm, where is that? So I looked at its location. You know, one of the things that I have observed here in town is people waiting long, long times, I mean, an hour for an Uber or a Lyft, at, you know, 10:30 at night on a Saturday or something, just because we don't tend to have a lot around. If we had the program and we published, marketed it just a little bit, that might make it more available for people, because, you know, with the availability of, you know, three or four cars in town that tend to usually be here, then, you know, people can use it to go downtown or to, you know, do things that they maybe wouldn't otherwise do. It also perhaps would alleviate some of the parking challenges downtown on the weekend. So, yeah, I'm kind of seeing some potential benefits, but I think that, as she suggested, getting some input from the ride-sharing companies on, you know, what they've seen work in other communities would be useful in that area as well.
Awesome.
Not a problem.
Councilperson Fosser.
Thank you. I'm trying to remember about how much, do you know the average CARTS trip?
Average car, no, I don't know average-
I've taken it a few times, it seems like it's like a buck or two, I don't know, does anybody know? It's pretty-
It's under $10, though, I looked at their website, and it's under $10.
It's under 10, seems like it's even, okay. They receive a city subsidy of 40,000. Okay, gotcha. So, I wonder, I don't totally understand how the vouchers work, do they go to the company? Is it kind of like secure them a minimum?
So they get assigned to, you have a platform that you sign up for, and that platform, it's a special portal, so that's that backside work that occurs. So it's a special portal that gets created with our logo, our branding, and it's networked to the ride-sharing company. So when you create that account, you have a certain number of vouchers that get assigned to your unique ID, and that's how you utilize it through the portal.
So each individual user would have their-
Yes, ma'am.
-would have, so they would be paying for vouchers and not for rides? I don't understand where the vouchers go, sorry.
So, in the city of Kyle, where I lived before moving to Bastrop, you, Kyle is known as the pie capital of the world, and the play on pie is 3.17. So the households were provided $3.17 toward an Uber ride, and they were given 10 vouchers per month, per household. And you didn't have to use all 10, but one ride there, one ride back, so it's essentially five round trips, and it could only be used, and the city had done a study where from point A to point B, the furthest end of the city to the furthest end of the city was about a $7 charge. The city was essentially subsidizing 50% of the rideshare. That's Kyle. Flugerville has found, they're mostly using it toward persons with disabilities and seniors who are getting to their appointments within the town, they have specialized vans that are taking and meeting the needs that perhaps an on-demand service with the wait and the weather isn't meeting, so.
So the vouchers are at the individual rider level?
Yes, ma'am.
Gotcha, and those are subsidized from what their normal rate would be, but their drivers still get compensated?
Yes, the full amount.
Gotcha. Drivers are compensated?
Yes, so the Uber, if it's a $14 ride, it's still a $14 ride, the city just covers a certain amount of that, $5, $10, whatever metric we decide.
Okay.
And then that remainder is picked up by the end user, the customer themselves.
Okay, but they're aware of how much they're going to be paying before they go, like, it's clear for them, okay?
Yes. Similar to when you schedule an Uber ride, and it tells you the total amount, you would understand, oh, I have a voucher that's going to apply for this much, and I'm responsible for this remaining portion.
Okay, and we think that'll be about $90,000 a year, is that what we thought?
About.
About, and, okay. And we currently subsidize CARTS at 40, 40-something?
Correct.
Okay, and so this will be in addition, it'll operate during the CARTS hours as well, or only outside of the 7:00?
So that's not been determined at this point, so we could do research on if we wanted to have specialized hours that don't compete with CARTS, or if we want it to be a 24/7 model, that's kind of our, we get to kind of pick our destiny as far as that goes, because it would be our program to meet our needs as a city.
Okay, and any idea how much the consultant is that we would bring on to?
No, it depends on what you would get for the response and the RFPs, just what they send back, yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, I really like the idea of it, I just, it sounds like it's a lot of backend work, so I don't want to send them off running if it's, if everybody's not on board with it.
Funny story, the consultant that gets most of the work was actually a council member in the city of Kyle, who once this program was launched and successful and emulated, became a consultant on the other end, because they, they went through the hard knocks.
Councilperson Plunkett.
Yeah, this could be a little bit of a legal question, but would it be appropriate to potentially use, I know we haven't been good as a city, collecting the TABC fees from businesses, and I see this as very related to that, especially the after-hours part of it, and could be a real benefit to the businesses, you know, if we had somebody, we could, you know, if we have a customer that's, you know, probably shouldn't be driving, I would love to have a, an attractive option for them, other than, you know, call your wife, or, or wait until I get off and I'll take you home, I've done that before. But yeah, I'd be really interested in, in, not for this meeting probably, but, you know, meet offline and talk about some potential, is there any legal issue with doing anything like that?
Stan Springer, Lee, Assistant City Attorney. So, in my experience working with these types of programs in the city of Tyler and in Smith County and Williamson County, there, some of the companies that worked with the voucher program would offer actually on New Year's Eve and on certain holidays to provide those services for free if someone needed a ride for health and safety purposes, and that was sort of a donation that was done. So there can be some sort of arrangement along those lines in exchange for the work, because there is a public subsidy in the public interest, and of course, it's helpful, you know, for the law enforcement to have another tool out there for someone who needs help so that they're not driving the roads, and it's definitely a public service and a public benefit.
Yeah, I mean, as a business owner, I mean, if there's a mechanism to do it, man, I'm happy to pay that, you know, at least a portion of it, I'm happy to contribute on something like that. It's a, it's a risk mitigation, if, if you want to look at it completely cold and, and not, you know, even though I obviously do care about my customers, but even if I didn't, it's a risk mitigation play, so.
All right, I will do some more research and come back with an update.
Thank you. We're going to move on to, oh, sure.
Viv, I just thought of one more idea, like, if we're able to monitor the amount of vouchers that are being used, I know this is getting into it throughout the year, like, would we have the flexibility of doing like, specialized groups for a month, or like, we could, I wouldn't want to like, it's not use it or lose it, right, but we could have the flexibility of offering it to special groups at different times, like senior month or, I don't know.
So there are, so there is a fascinating world of analytics that goes into this ride-sharing program, and there's a dashboard, you get to understand age ranges, frequency, popular spots, I mean, it really, really drills down, and then if you have special events, maybe creating something special with, you know, or in addition with the ride-sharing company at that time, or the rideshare end-using company at that time, if we have certain events that we know are well-attended, and people are going to be with, moving around the city limits, and we want to alleviate some of the parking downtown, so no, there's a lot of possibility.
Okay, that kind of flexibility seems important to me and to us, especially for in our first year, if we go down this path.
And other cities, what they've also done is a pilot program, sometimes they'll do a pilot program for a year, and they have the discretion to terminate the pilot program after a year of seeing, you know, how it played out, if they want to continue into a second or third year, so there's that option.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to item 8A, receive a presentation on the unaudited monthly financial report for the months of November and December 2024. Ms. Allen. Now, I have a question for you. Are you going to present, I guess maybe it's going to be a different question than that, can you present the November and December numbers showing us only the December slides? So rather than go through the same slides two times, once for November and once for December, where December shows the November numbers as well, can you show us just the December and point out, you know, November was this and December was that?
I can do that, I also have a highlight slide for each month, would, is that acceptable?
Oh, certainly, yes.
That way you don't have to go through the long drawn out. Good evening, can y'all hear me okay?
Yeah, we hear you great, thanks.
Okay, to begin with the November highlights, sales tax was up 1.4% from forecast, property tax revenue is down approximately 276K. This is due to most sales tax being collected between the months of December through January. I can report that in January, we have already received approximately 1.7 million, and in the month of February alone, we've received about 1 million. So that number is picking up as predicted. Impact fees are down 75% compared to forecast. As city manager mentioned, we are bringing impact fee for wastewater to the next agenda item to hopefully shrink some of that. Dev Services is below revenue in November by approximately 24K. This is due to the holiday season in November. Wastewater revenue, BPNL, both revenue is up by 10%, as well as hot tax up by 16%. General fund expenditures is over approximately 380K. This is due to the police service dispatch contract being paid out, and that just wasn't included in our projections, so it tends to distort the numbers. Water wastewater expenses are 3.5 below forecast, hot expenses are down 11% from forecast, and development services is 13% down. The detail for both months is included in your packets. I'm going to jump to December highlights. All funds except for the wastewater have a positive bottom line. The wastewater fund was impacted by a land purchase pertaining to the wastewater treatment plant number three. Revenue, sales tax is 0.6% from forecast, we're pretty spot-on in regards to forecast for sales tax. Property tax revenue has started to pick up, they're at 64, 6.68% for December. Impact fees are down 40% compared to forecast. Development services are above projections by 26.5% for December. Wastewater, water revenue is at 9.27% or 197K, with hot fund revenue up by 33K. I'm sorry, BPNL revenue is up by 33K, and hot fund tax is up by 18%. General fund is within range and below expenses by 1.4%. Keep in mind that a large payment went out that month also for Open Gov, that includes the budgeting, the transparency, and a public in-face module. Hot expenses are down 13%, and water wastewater expenses are 105, 158% over forecast due to the land purchase, with development services expenses down 8%.
Councilperson Lee, do you have a question?
So you answered my wastewater question, thank you. And then my other question was, how are we negative in designated funds if those funds are designated?
I'm sorry, how are we negative in the designated fund?
Yes.
For November, their revenue was lower than projection, but by December, it had bounced back.
And then, there's a line item that doesn't have a number, I don't know if that was an error, but it's the CO series for November. CO series for November, and then, I think, oh, same thing in December, it looks like.
Borrow, we just got that money in October, so things are still settling out. You're, you probably won't see that till probably February, January, February.
Okay. And then, let me see if there's one more.
Oh, I'm sorry, that CO series 23, I'm talking CO series 24, I'm not sure why those, why that's a blank number. CO series 24 would be blank, because that's a very recent borrow, that would have just happened- That would have just happened.
This one just needs to be corrected.
Okay.
And then, I think, um, 75, negative 75, impact, oh, we talked about the impact fees. It went down a little bit. Um, and then I guess the last one would be the, oh, the Hunter's Crossing pit is just for, okay, collecting the assessments. Okay, the main one was the wastewater one, thank you.
Well, impact fees will make some correction after some of the multifamily projects come online and some of the other projects come online here very soon, within the next six months. I don't know that it'll make a bounce to its exact projection.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, then we'll move on to item 8B, review and discuss the Bastrop Fire Department and Bastrop Power and Light budget.
We got it, we got it.
Mayor Pro Tem.
The fire chief's gonna do the budget.
Yeah, I'm gonna let him take over in a second. Uh, I'm gonna introduce chief here in a second, and then we'll, I just want to talk one quick. So you'll notice on the screen, um, we're talking about the, the fire department's general fund. So you'll see where there were account numbers 101, that's the general fund, and then count 108, which is the new, or not the new, but it's the revenue account for, um, planning. And so when they transitioned from, um, from general fund off to their own fund, you'll see that in the fire department because the fire department gets paid into, the inspection fees go into that. So you'll see where it was general fund and then it transitions to 108. That's the difference, and that's why those are zeroed out. So, just so you know. So, I am gonna turn the Bastrop Fire Department's over to the chief, Chief Stone.
Welcome, chief.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem, council, thanks for having me tonight. Um, so, to go over the general fund budget for the fire department over the last five years, you see up on the screen in front of you, the, um, the fire prevention side is the only side that gathers revenue for the fire department. We get all those fees from our fire inspections, our fire plan reviews. Um, and obviously those grow, and they've been growing over the last five years. They grow with the development that we see. Um, last year, we brought in roughly, uh, 100, we brought in $62,000 last year in revenue for the fire department from those fees. Uh, every year they keep going up. For the general fund, for the fire department, uh, for the last five years, we started out in 2020, going from part-time staff to full-time staff, where you see our budget taking a massive increase. Um, with that, we started out at seven firefighters. The following year, we increased to 12 firefighters, full-time staff. Um, our year-over-year increase is primarily due to, um, equipment maintenance, cost increases, um, COLA increases for the staff, as well as, um, the annual 2.5% that we get from step increase. Um, and with that, just a quick breakdown for the fire department, we are four divisions. We have our administration division, which is the admin staff, which is the fire chief, the assistant fire chief, and our executive admin. We have the operational staff, which is our full-time paid staff, our volunteers. And then we also are in charge of the emergency management budget for the city. So, with that, any questions?
Just note that the fire is largely a general fund expense. So it's, it's not a revenue generator, will never maintain its own revenue, it just isn't. One of the things we are talking, every time we talk to a developer through the process, um, one of the goals is to, um, exact or through development agreement, um, public safety facilities. Because as the city tends to grow in a very amoeba-like shape, the stretch that the fire and police have to stretch, uh, is also larger, more fuel. So, response times will be affected. So, for example, as we talked to the development on 304, one of the, one of the participatory parts of the development agreement was a two-acre parcel donated for public safety services, including, and also the parks, uh, portion of the exaction. So, independent of the development process, but we still try to make sure that we marry those things to, again, give relief and offset to the general fund. It will always be a very personnel and equipment-heavy department.
Councilperson Fosser.
I have a question, but it's about our agenda packet, and it's not on that slide. So I don't know if you have that in front of you. But in general, it's about the volunteer section. Like, there's a salary section. Do y'all like, share administrative staff or something like that? There's like a 25,000?
No, so the volunteers are provided a stipend. So the volunteers are paid a stipend for every call they come and respond to.
Okay.
And it's divvied out as, as the amount of calls they make, uh, per quarter for them. So it's a way to help us gather volunteers.
Gotcha. Okay, thanks.
Okay, I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you. Cut off easy. All right, we're gonna move to Bastrop Power and Light Enterprise Fund. Um, as, uh, we said, our revenues are up 10%. Um, you can see our revenues there on all the electrical, residential, and, uh, commercial, um, commercial being the heaviest. And...
So what we have here is, the current year is the second bar in, in orange, right?
Yes.
And then, today, right, right, and then the budgeted is the one on the far left.
Yeah, so the orange bar is gonna be the actuals for, for this year, and then the left is the budgeted amount. We're only a quarter in.
No, 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 I, I, I'm just interpreting the graph for, for those of us watching along at home. So the other point, though, is then, is they're sorted from new estate to old estate.
Correct.
So the fact that there's an upward slope upwards into, you know, this direction for us to the left, that means that it's growing year-over-year.
Correct.
Yeah.
Correct, yeah. So the third bar will be the budgeted amount, or, yeah, the budgeted amount for 2024's last year. And then the fifth bar will be the, or sorry, the fourth bar will be the, um, the actuals that we had come in. So see, the actuals for residential was, uh, 3.4, and the actuals for commercial were 4.5, or, or sorry, 4.8 for FY24.
The concern about this particular fund is this fund is an enterprise fund. Enterprise funds are, are essentially supportive funds to the general fund. This fund transfers $650,000 to the general fund to offset administrative overhead. The goal is to begin to decline that transfer. There are necessary personnel, equipment, et cetera, et cetera. I had hoped to do that beginning this last year. It wasn't possible with the budget, but my goal is that we begin to reduce that transfer from BPNL, even if we start with a 25% reduction this coming budget season.
Thank you, ma'am. Yes, so, as you drop down to the next slide, it's gonna be our enterprise fund for actual expenses. As you can see, uh, the expenses for FY24 were at 7.6, and they actually budgeted 8.9. So they came in at 1.4 and, uh, positive, which is good for us. Good, good. Uh, this year's difference of our budget over last year was 402,000, an increase. Um, and so they didn't dip all the way into those savings that we got. So, um, some of that will be some projects that will be moving forward. So on, uh, line extension number four, and some of the other projects we already bought forward for design will be coming out of that surplus. Um, they currently have nine full-time. They have three admins that includes Curtis and a foreman, or sorry, yeah, a foreman, and then five linemen. And they have been pretty steady on that, uh, throughout the year. I think they had a 10 increase in FY23, and then we dropped them back down to nine. And they seem to be pretty consistent with nine. Uh, they actually have one open spot right now that they're, uh, looking for a person. So, know anybody looking for a lineman? Have a position open. Um, other than that, that is, any questions?
Just to tell you, Curtis does, they do participate in lineman training, do actively recruit. There is such a thing as lineman college. They do get paid very well, so for those folks out there listening. And two, that FTE was actually a data person when the city was going to pursue, um, internet, wifi, blank, 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 blank.
Yeah, I think they're apprentice, apprentice?
Yes, lineman apprentice.
Councilperson Lee.
Thank you. So, um, we don't have these slides in our packet, and I, they're actually better readable than what's in our packet. Um, so if we're gonna, how often are you gonna do these? Every, every two weeks? Um, but, I mean, you're gonna cycle through all the departments, and then you're gonna recycle through, or, okay. So, I, for me at least, it would be helpful if we had an executive summary of sorts, um, in our background history of these presentations, because we're kinda just getting all these line items. Um, and these slides make those line items make sense. Is there a way to?
Yeah, we just, yeah, we just took what was here and break it down.
Yeah, replace what we've been getting.
Send more graphs than numbers.
Yeah, we can do that.
Thank you.
Anything else, sir?
Councilperson Fosser.
Yes, please. Um, I'm, I'm gonna ask some questions about some stuff in our packet, so I'll, I'll do best to outline them so you don't have them in front of you.
Go ahead.
For the 2425, there was a 100,000 in community event support, and not in previous years, but then way back, there was community support. Have we moved that around? Because didn't they, didn't BPNL doesn't, do they still offer community support every year?
So BPNL used to do a community support. This community support was more, um, also, uh, the lighting of the Christmas, et cetera, et cetera. But there was a point where BPNL was offering like, small business awards. Um, one of the bakeries downtown actually had won a, an award from BPNL. We've not really picked that up anymore, but, um, that seems to be more an EDC function, perhaps.
Okay, so there's 100,000 budgeted this year. So are there plans to pick that up again?
That's probably the lighting.
Okay.
Yeah, we'll double check. I'm, I'm pretty sure that's the lighting, the downtown lighting stuff.
Okay, and then the other one that just caught my eye because it's so different than years prior is the professional services. Um, went from like 7,500, 1,700 to 157,000 for this year?
Yeah, it's gonna be the project, yeah, the design work on the engineering.
Okay, thank you, you said that. Let's see those all of them. And then transfers out, or will, will be going down every year?
That's my hope, that's my hope. Um, the extension of, uh, four, which is over by Buc-E's, will help accommodate the additional charging stations that Mercedes wants to bring online, and then also all of the residential growth up through Hoffman and back around. So, much-needed, uh, line extension that'll create additional revenue, but still, there are many, many things that BPNL is still in need of.
Okay, thank you. I like looking at this every two weeks. This is great.
Councilperson Plunkett.
Yeah, if I'm not mistaken, about half or so, maybe a little less of the industrial park is BPNL. Okay, um, I'm assuming that extension four will provide additional capacity there. Do we have plenty of capacity there?
So, well, so what the, extension four is gonna do is alleviate?
Right, I understand that.
And give them more capacity on that side, and then add capacity to the, to the east feeder.
No, the industrial park will need its own extensions. That was included in the 16 million, um, proposed cost to bring all of those things online in the industrial park. Right now, TA Adhesives, who came online last month or so, they're on BPNL service. Uh, nobody else thus far. So, anything that we sell above that quote-unquote line of demarcation will be BPNL, but there's not much room left up there for BPNL service. So everything that we're earning is 95 back on through Hoffman.
Just want to make sure we're being nimble and if, you know, if we find a good, uh, buyer for the industrial park that we're able to service them.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
We'll move on to number nine, citizens' comments. I have one form up here. Madam City Secretary, do we have any others? Okay. So Dax Haverlack.
Let's go, Dax Haverlack, 779 Peach Creek Road, Rosanqui, Texas. Uh, I was gonna give you all the compliment combo, but I've got a bitter sandwich compliments for today. Uh, your first big compliment, thank you to city staff and working with Tech Dot to get the, uh, that big blue sign that was on 71, fixed up, repaired, taken away. And also at the police station, there was a traffic signal that had been knocked down for about seven weeks. It finally got fixed up. Um, so thank y'all for doing that. The bitter one, uh, which I was expecting in a mayor's report, or Pro Tem report, was the more rational explanation on the vote against Prop M, the decriminalization of marijuana from last session. It happened way deep into the night, so I was hoping that there was going to be like, a little bit more talk about the process of how something can go up to city vote, and then finally kicked off at the very end based on, what, the legal action that could be taken from the state. Just, just a, I don't know, that's my one little bitter gripe for tonight. Um, overall, my final big compliment is that Montegraw happened. Massive success. Checked in with all the little businesses, and they show that they hit rent for the month by noon on the day. So, a lot of businesses were made really happy with just how much money came through. Love the stat that we have about 6,000 people come into town. Did not feel like 6,000 more people were hitting into the community, but parking is always an issue. So, it was pretty exciting to see that Bastrop as a downtown could absorb 6,000 people. Maybe if it keeps growing, we can end up like Hog Eye, where we have 20,000 people absorbed in, and then we start getting into ride shares and bus switch-arounds. Um, but Montegraw, always a delight, always a festival. We got a party till like 10:00 PM, and then can take it upstairs and go to the apartment rentals to party even harder. Um, but yeah, Montegraw's pretty fantastic. Uh, otherwise, I'm excited to see more faces out, I guess on this, next weekend, 22nd for Community Cleanup Day. Um, and then some more of those juicy applications for council positions, mayor positions, because I believe those applications open up and start February 17th. So I'm excited to see, I don't know, the next three more months, uh, until it's a season finale of whatever the 2024, 25 council is. And we'll have some more faces, full dais, and we'll see all that happening in May. Yeah, thank y'all. Have a good evening.
Thank you. We're now gonna move on to the consent agenda. Does any council member wish for one of the items to be removed from the consent agenda? Okay. Councilperson Lee.
I wanna pull, please, B. And... City Manager, is, is anyone in the audience for the pets to save the angel?
Yes.
I would like to pull F because I'd like for them to talk a little bit more about their organization. So B and F.
Okay. So council, we have a consent agenda in front of us. It is in the agenda. This document is available online. We will be voting to approve in one, uh, motion and vote, 10A, 10C, 10D, 10E, and we will be, uh, dealing with 10B and 10F, uh, subsequently. So is there a motion on the table for the consent agenda?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion from my, Councilperson Meyer, and a second from Councilperson Lee. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion passes unanimously. Let's take up item 10B, consider an act on the process for city council to engage legal and direct staff to provide a resolution amending the rules of procedure at the February 25th, 2025 meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. So the only question I had about this is the documents that we received in the packet was more like the presentation for the, um, Power and Light. Um, it didn't, I didn't, where was the breakdown for council member use? I didn't see the breakdown of what we've currently been spending in council member use in the packet. I thought we were gonna get that.
Uh, no. So the, the billing from our prior service provider is very difficult to comb through in terms of exactly who, what, when, where, and it's not an apples-to-apples comparison. So what you had in your prior packet was a breakdown per fund, the general fund, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
Right, I know. And I, from that, you can't tell where is the council members' money coming from, that they're spending. Which fund, where, in all those lines, there's no way to tell, like, I don't, I don't understand why we got that breakdown because... Which, which fund, where, in all those lines, there's no way to tell like, I don't, I don't understand why we got that breakdown because we're talking about our costs and none of that was in the packet.
So the council is in the general fund. That was in your prior packet. That's where the council resides. Our prior service provider would list something like, uh, conversation regarding recall, period. I don't know who it was with. I don't know any of that. So that was hard to classify. Then there was conversation with Councilmember Lee, Councilmember Plunkett, Councilmember Meyer.
So we just don't have a breakdown?
I don't have a good breakdown. It's very difficult to reconcile.
And this five thousand dollars amount is based off of, um?
That, that's just a swag. That's just a, you guys get to decide what that amount is going to be.
So then if it's on, and then that's why I kinda wanted to pull it, because if it's on the consent agenda, do we need to decide what that's gonna be here or where are we gonna decide?
You can make a recommendation on what that number should be.
Yeah, I mean, I, I feel like that needed discussion, cause I don't, I, I don't even know where I was. I didn't use them often. So that's why I was kinda wanting to see the breakdown to see on average, how much are we using him?
It's going to, yeah, it's going to be very much better if you can have a PIN number assigned to you. And so, again, because I can't dictate the lawyer what, he works for y'all, not for me. So by the time I see it, those things have already occurred. I'm just charged with paying the bill and it's very difficult to audit a bill because I'm gonna come to you and ask you something that you've had a personal conversation with the attorney about.
No, I'm, I was looking for something that would give us a way to determine what amount we wanna set for each council member. And for me, it's hard to do that if I don't know what we were using before in a breakdown.
So councilperson Lee, I mean, I, I think that you're correct that, you know, it would be nice to know what we have used, looking backwards to then guess or estimate what we would use going forward. But since that data is not available, I think part of the resolution that comes back to us should include a directive to the, uh, city attorney's office to track it in such a way that we can keep track of that in the future. Five thousand dollars is probably, I don't know, fifteen, twenty hours, something in that ballpark of, of legal services. So you can kind of think through, uh, how much time, you know, you, you think you've used or, uh?
Very, like, maybe twenty. So you're saying five thousand is fifteen to twenty annually?
Yeah.
I mean, is that good with y'all? I, I, I don't, are we setting that today? Where are we going?
Well, what we're setting today is direction to the city manager to bring back a resolution, so we can set it again when they, we actually get the real resolution in front of us. Setting at five thousand allows us to see how, I mean, it allows us, first of all, to track it. That's imperative for moving forward so that we can have this conversation with actual numbers in the future. Second, what you're gonna find is that you're gonna have money clustered around certain projects or certain activities with specific named council members who championed that thing. And then someone else might literally have zero, right? And so we get to talk about what to do with that and then, um, change the policy at that time. But I think for, for a starting point, we would have direction to the city attorney's office to track it so that we have metrics in the future. Set five thousand dollars each and then that lets us talk about it whenever next time is.
And I just, are we all okay with five thousand?
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's the, that's the right question.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you. So the point to me on setting, um, a budget for us is not to see how much we need to spend, it's to see how much we should spend to be fiscally responsible. Because I know if I have a wallet full of money, I'll spend all that money. But if I only have so much, I wanna be a little more cognizant. So I think this will help all of us be a little more fiscally responsible and, and think a little harder before we spend, uh, public funds, uh, maybe in, in not the best way. So I really appreciate a budget. Five thousand dollars is more than enough for me. Because I do think with a system where we're gonna be much more efficient, not all asking the same questions, we're gonna have, um, definitely procedure to know exactly how much money we're spending. That's what we have to know. Because it's public funds we're using. So we have to know exactly. So let's set the budget. Let's be, uh, let's be conservative on this and, and live in our limits and, and make it work. I think we can make this work really well.
Councilperson, oh, sorry, go ahead.
Sorry. For me, it was more an issue of transparency, because I can't tell you how many times I was speaking to the attorney and, and he had already spoken to you, to you, to you, to you, to you. And the policy would require the city attorney's office to send a response to all of you of what was spoken about within twenty-four hours of that conversation or whatever time limit you want to send, because I think that too would cut down on a lot of the this, that, and the other. And you get clear, concise information and you get it timely and you're all looking at the same playbook as to what was discussed.
Councilperson Fosser.
I'm, I'm fine with starting at five thousand and if we, I mean, there's, will probably be a mechanism later if it's not working. Like, we treat the first year like a pilot program and if there'll be a mechanism that we can like change the resolution or modify it or make a new one if it really tends to, if it's not enough. Like, I just think like, we gotta start somewhere and if it's a great place to start, then we just treat it like a pilot program. That's my two cents.
Councilperson Plunkett.
Yeah, I agree. Um, and I think five thousand is as good as ten thousand, is as good as two thousand. So, I mean, I, you know, it's a, again, I'd like, uh, Councilmember Fosser said it's a starting point. And if it turns out not to be enough or too much, we can adjust it, you know, super easy from there. My question is to, um, the city attorney and do you see any difficulty in complying with any of the aspects of this? Or should we, that's the thing I wanna make sure.
We have very good office managers. They will take care of all of that.
Outstanding. Thank you. Yeah, cause that's always been an issue is you look at the invoices and you can't tell who they talked to, how many times or whatever.
Move to approve?
Second.
Motion from Councilperson Plunkett, second from Councilperson Lee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? The motion carries unanimously.
We'll bring back a resolution, an official resolution of the next council meeting.
Thank you. Item ten F, consider an act on resolution number R twenty-two-five dash thirty-eight allowing the Save an Angel organization to waive the special event permit fee and utilize a city hall parking lot located at thirteen eleven Chestnut Street on the third Sunday of each month for free rabies vaccinations for pets open to the public.
Good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council. Thank you guys for considering this. Uh, my name is Jeremy Parks. I am the executive director of Save an Angel. We are a five oh one C three nonprofit animal welfare group here in Bastrop. We run a low-cost pet wellness and spay and neuter clinic at the Bastrop County Animal Shelter. We're located on their same campus. And we now have a mobile unit, a mobile veterinary trailer that we would like to start taking out into the community and offering free and low-cost services. And we'd love to host one of those free rabies vaccine events as a pilot here at city hall. And ultimately, um, our goal would be to continue to do them monthly here.
What time on Sundays?
Between nine and one is what we're looking at tentatively. Um, it would be free and it would be appointment-based so that way we don't, um, we've been hosting these in the city of Elgin, um, and we generally have about a hundred people or a hundred pets come out on the good service, dogs and cats. And, um, we've been doing them, we've transitioned to appointment-based with about every five to ten minutes we see a pet. It really just helps to prevent any, uh, safety issues or traffic jams, so.
Right. Councilperson Plunkett.
Oh, go ahead. Yeah, that makes sense.
Thank you. Um, so I, I wanted to find out more about like, I was re, I actually pulled up the actual website and was reading it and how it all got started in New Orleans and all of that. And so if someone, the, one of the things that caught my interest, interest was the surgery piece. So how would one apply if they needed surgery? What are, is there insurance that you offer? If, if my dog needs some major surgery that costs a lot of money, how do you assist in that?
Sure. So our primary focus is essential like wellness care, spay and neuter surgeries. Um, that's our spay and neuter clinic up at the animal shelter. All of those appointments are available online through our website or a call center. We do a wellness clinic as well, which is essential, uh, vaccines, heartworm testing, preventative, things like that, just to keep a pet that is healthy, already healthy. Secondary to that, um, on a case-by-case basis, we do have an, an application online, uh, for financial assistance as far as emergencies and things like that. Uh, but our real specialty is, is keeping healthy pets healthy, um, and focusing on preventing pet overpopulation through spay and neuter, so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilperson Plunkett.
Yeah, I just wanna congratulate y'all on the work that you do. Uh, I've, don't know how many critters we've brought to y'all and, uh, always had an excellent experience there. My wife loves y'all, which, you know, even if I didn't already, that would mean I would love you too. And, uh, just great job. I'm glad to see y'all expand and, and, and offer more services and happy to help in any way we can.
Councilperson Meyer.
Thank you. And I just also wanna say thank you so much. And I really appreciate, um, what you offer and also working with the animal shelter posting it all the time about y'all. So all the information's there. So leading into that, my question, could we possibly, city manager, post this also on our city of Bastrop website?
Yes, once we get the first official date, we'll post it as a kickoff and share.
Social media too, yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Councilperson Fosser.
Just wanna say you guys are wonderful. Thank you for your good work. And also if you have an, uh, location in the city limits, then it's eligible for a cart's ride and a possible rideshare. So that's awesome. Thank you.
We're growing up, ma'am. We're growing up.
Councilperson Lee, would you like to make a motion?
Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Mayor, move to approve.
We have a motion from Councilperson Lee and Councilperson Meyer as second. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Unanimous passage. Congratulations and welcome. Okay, we're gonna move on to items for individual consideration. Eleven A is broken up into A and B. I might as well just read both of those and then we'll deal with them. A is consider an act on resolution number R twenty-two-five dash thirty-four on city recommendation regarding the bids received for the city of Bastrop's request for proposals for depository and banking services and authorizing a second request for proposals for depository and banking services. B is consider an act on resolution R twenty-two-five dash thirty-five approving to extend the term of the current bank depository agreement with First National Bank of Bastrop from January thirty-first, twenty twenty-five until January thirty-first, twenty twenty-six. Ms. Allen?
Um, okay, to give a little cap, uh, December eleventh of two thousand eighteen, city council designated First National Bank of Bastrop as the city's depository. The terms of that agreement was January first, two thousand eighteen through December thirty-first of twenty twenty-four. At the December twelfth meeting, council did approve an extension of the contact, the current agreement to January thirty-first of twenty twenty-five as well as giving staff, uh, the authority to go out for an RFP for new depository services. Unfortunately, we had a very aggressive timeline and I think due to that aggressive timeline, we really limited the responses that we received with the RFP. The current RFP that we put out, we received one response. Um, if we were to accept that response, it would, um, cause the city to incur approximately about three hundred and fifty dollars a month in fees that we don't currently have with our existing contract. So based on that, we're requesting to extend our current contract with First National Bank of Bastrop to January thirty-first of twenty-six. And that would then give us time to go out with a better RFP to encompass all of our community banks.
So this is for the city's banking services?
Yes.
Correct? And we're required to go out for an RFP, how frequently? Like every four years, every five years, something like that?
Five.
Every five years, okay. And so we got one bid and it was not as good as our current service. And so we'd like to reopen the bidding. That's, that's the bottom line, right?
It is.
Okay, excellent. Okay, council, do y'all have any questions? Councilperson Fosser?
I do. Um, our agenda packet, the one online says, it's, the resolution is to extend it through March of twenty twenty-five?
The, the staff report is not correct. I apologize. The staff report says March. We are requesting to January thirty-first of twenty-six.
Of next year. Okay, awesome. Just wanted to clarify. Thank you.
Okay, so do we have a motion for A?
Motion to approve.
A motion to approve resolution R twenty-two-five dash thirty-four from Councilperson Meyer, seconded by Councilperson Plunkett. Any other discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed say nay? Okay, let's move on to item B. A motion for this one?
To approve.
Second.
Motion first from Councilperson Lee, a second from Councilperson Fosser. Any additional discussion? Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, A and B both carry unanimously. Thank you very much. Now, item eleven B, consider an act on the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh-nine setting the salary for the office of the presiding mutual municipal court judge and approving an amendment to the agreement between the city and Caroline McLymon, J.D., to reflect such salary increase.
Mayor Pro Tem, council, this one's pretty, uh, simple. And we made a budget adjustment in this year's increase by a hundred thousand. Uh, we're asking to increase the judge's salary, uh, in her contract via this ordinance to reflect that budget adjustment that we made. Any questions?
Any motions?
Second.
Have a motion from Councilperson Meyer, a second from Councilperson Plunkett. Any, uh, additional discussion?
I would say our judge does a fantastic job.
She does.
Super deserving of this. She, uh, we're a municipal court of, uh, record and she does all magistrates for the city at, uh, the jail. She's super busy. Yes, and now allows video magistration.
So have a motion on the floor to approve the first reading of ordinance twenty-two-five dash oh-nine. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed, aye? Okay, motion passes unanimously. Item eleven C, consider an act on resolution R twenty-two-five dash thirty-seven supporting the submission of preliminary applications to the Texas Department of Transportation or Tech Dot for the Transportation Alternative Sit-aside Program twenty-two-five. Call for projects.
Hi, good evening, Mayor Pro Tem and council members. So the item you have before you today is a resolution supporting the submission of preliminary applications to the Tech Dot Transportation Alternative Sit-aside Program. So Tech Dot announced its call for projects in January third of this year. And this call for projects provides funding to plan for and construct a variety of alternative transportation projects that improve safety and mobility for non-motorized travelers. It features a two-step application process, starting with the preliminary application, which is due February twenty-first. And it provides a high-level proposed project information to determine eligibility and funding opportunities. And then next we'll have the detailed application, which will start around April. And then finally, Tech Dot anticipates commission award for October twenty twenty-five of this year. So the city is allowed to submit two applications, but only one can be awarded. The local match for the awarded project is twenty percent. So we have two proposed projects. The old Austin, uh, and these names I just came up with, you know, they're very tentative. The Old Austin Highway Shared Use Path Improvements. And for clarification, a shared use path is intended for pedestrians and bicyclists. And by Tech Dot standards, it has to be a minimum of ten feet wide. As you'll see in our project, we're going a little bit above and a bit beyond that. And the next proposed project would be pedestrian crossing improvements. So the first one, the location, as you can see on the screen, um, the blue shows new sidewalk and we're gonna do twelve feet. This is conceptual. The design may change, but the intent is to be a shared use path, uh, but around the Bastrop Middle School. And then follow, and we're gonna widen the existing sidewalk along the north side of Old Austin Highway from four feet to the twelve feet. And as you can see, there's the existing conditions. The one on the left is a view of the Schaefer, Schaefer Boulevard. And it actually does capture someone walking in the grass that essentially has become a path just by overtime. The left or the right side of Schaefer is still in conceptual design, but the intent is to put a sidewalk there for, uh, for people needing to walk that path. And then the Old Austin Highway is shown to the right. And as you can see, it is right next to the road. It is very narrow. And so the intent would be to move it away from the road and widen it for safety. This project aims to provide a safer connection from schools, so this will connect the middle school and intermediate school located on this side to the downtown, which has schools, public library, and the public parks, and then it'll be part of a larger commercial corridor in the future. Moving on to the second proposed project.
Can you hold on one second? Do we have to purchase right-of-way for sidewalks? Like if we're talking about 12-foot wide sidewalks, do we have to go and purchase?
Yes, if there's no right-of-way, yeah.
Okay.
We could get an easement also, I mean.
From, from the conceptual level of it, I do believe we have enough right-of-way, but the cost includes right-of-way acquisitions. So then the second project would be pedestrian crossing improvements. This includes upgrading current pedestrian crossings with higher visibility additions. So I have two example existing conditions. The one on the top left is on Old Austin Highway near the schools. And as you can see, the, the road is, it's not as visible as it should be. And then below it is an example in Austin, and they have a stop line, and then they have the overhead lights, kind of like a cantilever, and then additional signs saying like, "Stop here." And then the lights are, when the pedestrians push the button, they would light up. So that would be for these higher traffic, you know, for the schoolchildren to provide the safety. And then another example is on the top right is at Hassler and Old Austin. There's just the pedestrian crossing sign, and that's pretty much it. Below is an example here in Bastrop on Carter Street that does show good, that has a flashing light for pedestrians when they push the button, and it's, it's, it's pretty well visible, but it is missing the stop line, so there's further improvements that could be done there as well. And this project would just aim to prioritize the safety of pedestrians by increasing the visibility at crosswalks. And this is a very conceptual prelim application. Do y'all have any questions? Or recommendations of how we want to handle this?
So this is supporting the submission of these preliminary applications?
Correct.
Any idea, the 2025 call for projects, any idea on award timeframe?
So it'd be October.
Okay.
Move to approve.
Second.
Counselperson Plunkett for the motion, Counselperson Meyer for the second.
Mayor Protem, I just wanted to make it clear why you're seeing these today. We have a variety of grants in our queue that's, some of which I have no idea where the match is going to come from. And so I want to make sure that they see the light of day, council authorizes us, and then in which, at which point, she told you there's a 20% grant match. So we know we've got to go find that grant match. So it's just trying to bring more transparency to what we're submitting so that we're not scrambling at the 11th hour.
I actually did have a question that you answered, and that was, why are you asking for permission to go out and get, you know, assistance with projects, but it's because of the
Yes.
the commitment to take on a match that we have to commit to.
Yes, it is, it is the commitment to take on a match that sometimes we forget about.
Okay, we have a motion on the table to approve resolution 2025-37.
One more question, Mayor Protem.
Yes, go ahead.
So at one point, you were looking at either training someone to be a grant writer or bringing on a grant writer. Whatever happened with that to help us, you know, increase our chances of winning these grants?
We reclassified a position. Jimmy Campbell's position has been reclassified, and it'll include grants administration. Unfortunately, Jimmy is leaving us in April, so we'll put that position out if it's not already out on the website.
And one of the recs will be grant writing for the position?
And administration.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other discussion? We have a motion on the table to approve 2025-37. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much. Ms. Wick, good job. 11D, consider an act to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-07 establishing and adopting a short-term rental registration process, amending the Bastrop Code of Ordinances, Chapter 4, by enacting Article 4 dot 13, Sections 4, 1301 through 012, titled Short Term Rentals, and move to include on the February 25th consent agenda for second reading. I beat you.
Hello, good evening. All right, so I'm before you tonight to talk about the STR process we're looking to adopt. I know that some of y'all have attended the open house that we had and have been in attendance at some of the other public meetings that I've had with, just giving the boards and commissions updates regarding this. So therefore, I will be brief on this topic unless you desire to have me answer more questions, which will not be a problem. But of course, as you know, the STRs are generally categorized as rentals that are less, that are for less than 30 consecutive days. Currently, we are looking to adopt a policy and put it in place that will require everyone that operates a short-term rental to register with the city of Bastrop. Our reasons, of course, are life safety, collection of hot taxes, and co-compliance. It's important that anyone operating this within the city limits know our value points. It's important that anyone that is operating an STR is paying hot taxes because those fund some of our community assets. And it's also important that anyone operating a short-term rental has the appropriate information to give the customer so that they have a safe and awesome experience in our wonderful town. Some of the information that, well, the information that we will ask the owner and/or operator of an STR to have, it would be, or to furnish to the city, will be the address of the short-term rental, some contact information, any affiliated marketing platforms. We're also, this point I think is very important. We are looking for contact information for a local 24-hour contact person. That's important in case of an emergency, or if for some reason we have to send out like a boil water notice. If we can get that to a local contact person, they can let the guest staying in that STR know about that, because a lot of times they don't follow our social platforms or things like that. We will ask them to just have a statement that they agree to follow our rules, essentially, in that way acknowledge them. And that's hopefully a touch point so that whenever they're agreeing to that statement, if they don't know about them, we can have that moment of conversation and/or education where we can share and we can learn together, and we can just be partners together in this process. We will ask that they are in compliance with Chapter 11 of the Code of Ordinances, which is related to hot taxes. And that is, of course, a state rule as well, the payment of hot taxes for STRs. And then this is important too, I think, because this is kind of like a quality of life issue as far as the end of the statement. We will ask to understand number of bedrooms, proposed number of occupants, not so much that, but the number of off-street parking spaces used for the site. That's a quality of life issue. We've heard from the public, we've heard from the community that, you know, they want to see that structures are able to park, either for the people that live there or the guests that might be visiting, so. In addition to this, there will be a $25 registration fee. It is $25 each year, and then it's just an annual fee. So essentially, the STR, what they'll be required to provide onsite is, so let me clarify this. Originally, we had talked about a registration number. I heard back from the community, and they had some really good points. That's now an optional provision within the ordinance. So we will have registration stickers available that are holographic in nature. The STR can choose to display that, or they can choose to not display it if they don't want it to be some kind of thing that could be used to make people aware that this is maybe a place that isn't always occupied. We will ask, of course, for adequate parking onsite, and that they provide a floor plan showing bedrooms or other living spaces, emergency evacuation route, and then a copy of any of our local regulations or restrictions. We'll help provide that. So we'll gather that information kind of as an informational packet, so when they come in to register, the idea is that we give that to the STR owner and/or operator to hand out to their guests. As far as public engagement goes, we had the town hall meeting on January 22nd, 2025. We also had a update that was presented to the Planning and Zoning Commission on January 30th, and then we also met with the Historic Landmark Commission on February 5th to talk about it. There was actually really good feedback, very receptive. I was, you know, I was ready for super tough questions, and they asked good ones, but it was, it went over really well. So I'm recommending that you, the council, take action on the first reading of the STR ordinance as proposed by staff.
So based on your recollection, can you tell us the differences between your, you know, version 1.0 document and what we have here in front of us? Because I watched us go through this process. I went to a number of those meetings, and we took that feedback from the, from the public. We listened and we modified. So I want, can you run through some of those changes for us?
Yeah, I like that. So initially, the major changes are initially, we had an inspections process that was baked into this. We have removed that. It is truly, truly, truly a registration process. After speaking with our building official and our fire chief, it does create a liability issue. Once one of our people enters that door and certifies it at any level, it is a liability issue. So if you're going to do it, you need to do it all. You need to do it comprehensively. So we went ahead and pulled that out. It is just a registration piece. One piece too that was talked about at the initial STR town hall meeting was the certificate of occupancy measure. This is not incorporated into the STR registration policy. This is just a registration for the STR. We will offer an education moment and/or opportunity to the owner or operator about the CVO process, but that's not going to be mandated. That's a separate fee, separate process, and I, we want to stay true to our commitment that this is a registration process at a $25 fee. The CFOs are currently at $125, so that would have changed the nature of the messaging that we have been giving to the community. The other part that we went ahead and changed was we decided on the sticker. The sticker was another one that was required, and after hearing back from the community, and people have STRs that are historic homes. They were like, "I don't really want to put a sticker on the front facade of my beautiful historic home." And I was like, "Understood, not a problem. This is your ordinance, your community. We will honor that." So those were some of the changes.
Wasn't there something about the fire extinguisher or something?
That was part of the life safety inspection that I had previously mentioned that was going to be a part of us walking into that building, but then, once again, that creates a liability issue, so we removed that. We will inform them of there is a fire code in existence, and there are some requirements in the fire code, but that won't be part of this process. It'll just be the registration. Yes, ma'am.
Counselperson Meyer.
Thank you. So just two questions, or just two things, because you did such a great job at the HLC meeting explaining some things that made so much sense. But my first statement is just to let everyone know, the citizens, everyone, in our attempt to not be like Austin, Austin has an $800 registration fee that's proposed, so they're looking at their STR policy right now. So $25 is much more friendly to, to, to everyone, so I appreciate that. But one thing, if you could explain, because you did such a great job, Vivy, is on the homestead exemption, you explain that about an ADU?
Yeah.
Using that, and then the percentage, so if you could let us know.
Yeah, yeah, and that question, that information was actually prompted by Ms. Fosser's question. So ADUs, primary dwellings, STRs, homestead tax exemption. How does that work? So if you have an ADU and it is rented out as an STR for less than 50% of the year, you will still receive your homestead exemption. If it's rented out for more than 50% of the year, it will not qualify for the homestead exemption. Conversely, if you have a primary dwelling, which you would if you have an ADU typically, if you have a primary dwelling, same principle applies there. You can actually have your primary dwelling be an STR, as long as you occupy that for more than 50% of the year, your homestead exemption will still apply. You can choose to not, of course, have your primary dwelling be an STR. And then anything over the 50% threshold does, once again, negate the homestead exemption. The appraisal district, when I spoke to them, said that they take into consideration the land and the structure it sits on. So if you have a total lot with a primary dwelling and an ADU, and it's over 50% of the year for the ADU, it's just that ADU that loses the homestead exemption. The house and the rest of the land itself will still qualify for the homestead exemption.
But just for clarity, you're telling everyone what someone else's rules are, not our rules.
Correct.
Right?
Correct, yes. So I reached out to the appraisal district as a result of Ms. Fosser's question, and I think it's, you know, a good informational point.
Absolutely, yeah. I just didn't want anyone to think that those were our rules, or that we were passing that tonight.
Correct.
Completely unrelated, this is just the rules of the appraisal district.
Bastrop Central Appraisal District. They're fabulous to work with. Really appreciate their information.
Okay, thank you very much.
One final topic too, I guess, that I'll touch on is, anyone that registers, we will have a map that's provided to the community that we will host on one of our pages, just as kind of a partnership incentive to come in and get registered. You get free marketing on the city map, so.
Okay, council.
Move to approve.
Second.
A motion to approve from Counselperson Meyer, a second from Counselperson Fosser. Any other discussion? This is to approve the first reading of ordinance number 2025-07. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Unanimously passes. Move on to item 11E, conduct a public hearing. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-10, amending the Code of Ordinances related to Chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 6 dot 3, General Lot Standards 6304, protected and heritage trees, and move to include on the February 25th consent agenda for the second reading.
Good evening, mayor and council. This is this item, and the next three are work done by P and Z, the park board, and a lot of public input. It all relates to conserving our natural trees in the city. Basically, this one is a reduction in size. We're currently allowed under the local government code to reduce from 13 inches to 10 inches, so the trees that were from 10 to 13 inches will now be identified and be required to be addressed as part of a tree mitigation. So we're basically through a reduction in size, adding a stronger requirement to get more trees protected. Any specific questions?
Council.
Move to approve.
Motion to approve from Counselperson Meyer, a second from Counselperson Plunkett. Discussion, Counselperson Fosser, go ahead.
This puts us stricter than the city of Austin, who is notoriously super strict on trees. I think they regulate at 19 inches caliper. Is that true for Austin? And we're going to be at 13, so we are really
10.
Oh, sorry, a 10, from 13 to 10, so we are like super tree city, that's all I'm saying.
We are super tree city, but I want to caveat, we give a bunch of credits, so I don't want anybody to leave here with the word stricter than Austin, because that is a super scary thing. We do give a lot of credits for invasive trees, all kinds of stuff that some of the others do not.
Okay, council, any other discussion? Okay, we have a motion on the table to, whoa, hold on, sorry, conduct a public hearing. Can't skip that one. So do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing? Okay, I'm going to open it. I'm going to close it. Now, we have a motion on the table. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously for ordinance 2025-10, first reading approval. Move on to item 11F, conduct a public hearing. There's that word again. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-11, amending the Code of Ordinances related to Chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Article 6 dot 3, General Lot Standards 6304, protected and heritage trees, adding C and E, 6304, protected and heritage trees, changing C4, adding 6, 6304, protected and heritage trees, changing E4, adding 6, 6304, protected and heritage trees. Am I going in a loop here? Adding G1 and H1 and 2, 6304, protected heritage trees, adding F2, and move to include on the February 25th, 2025 consent agenda for the second reading.
So again, this is more tree conservation stuff. This kind of, we just got more specific language spelling out where tree surveys are required, requiring more detailed tree surveys. Part of the biggest thing is discussion about tree sizes and replacement trees, and it was group consensus with experts involved is there was a discussion about 2-inch trees, 3-inch trees, and 4-inch trees. So we came up with a minimum size of a 2-inch diameter tree, 5 foot in height, with understanding that younger tree, again, coming from nurseries and stuff, is more apt to survive than a larger tree, and usually a smaller tree over a period of time will actually bypass that bigger tree that was root-bound, was in a bucket, whatever. So that's one of the big things, of having arborists, which we have on staff, to identify trees that are dying or dead. Again, language, as Vivy just touched on, allowing for mitigation, trying to save trees, trying to move trees around. One thing here we talked about is adding some language here on this particular section, and I think, did I miss it? Well, one thing we talked about was once a tree, there it is. Where did it go to? Once a tree is planted, it stays, you basically have to maintain it forever. Where's that language? Sorry, going the wrong way. Sorry, I'm going the wrong way. Did I miss it? Sylvia, where's it at?
It was in the, it was in the 2, where you saw the 2 inches. And it's going, it's in the next section, as you talked about. But that, go back.
Back one more.
Right there, right there, right there.
So basically, what we're talking about here is adding language here where when you place a tree, the intent was to have that tree there forever. And if a tree dies, we're asking to add discussion here that instead of surviving for one year, it stays in perpetuity. So that's amendment. Y'all would have to make as counsel to add that language is, what's the purpose of having a tree replaced and after a year it dies, you've lost that requirement or that tree? So the goal is to keep that tree there as long as that development's there. That's one minor change we're requesting.
I wasn't looking at the lights. I was looking at the screen. So I'm just going to go left or right. Counselperson Fosser.
So at P&amp;Z, it passed one year for to protect it and replace it up to one year? Is that how P&amp;Z passed it?
Um, P&amp;Z passed it to protect it one year, but it conflicts with a different section where we originally had a five-year and we said the tree needs to be protected in perpetuity. So if we left this the way it is, it would conflict with another section.
So in another section, they already passed it in perpetuity?
Perpetuity, yes.
So is this cash, okay.
Yes.
And is this a legal definition or the real definition? Does that mean forever and ever amen, or is there like any kind of?
Forever and ever amen.
So when it lives out its natural life, it still has to be replaced?
Correct.
Okay, but with a 2-inch at 5-foot? Okay. My other, I think I might add one other question.
And this will also start to make better sense when we move into the public and private realm discussion. Today, the code allows what they consider public realm, meaning all of those trees, all of those things are pushed into public rights away or pushed into public areas. We're coming back to definitions clarity. So then when we go into the landscaping, it's super clear where things go.
Okay. My question came from a citizen in Pecan Park. They're wondering, is this just for new development or does this apply to the whole city once we pass this? This is just for new development codes, right?
New development, yes. And it's going to relate to the trees that the developer is required to put in per.
Okay.
And so, again, the public-private realm, the development pushed all of those things into the public realm, meaning we, the city, are responsible for them.
So only new developments, only for new bills, new bills, and fill development, that kind of thing? Okay, okay. I'm clear. Thanks.
Counselperson Plunkett.
Yeah, one, the 2-inch is a change from 4, is that correct?
So there's discussion about 3 and 4. And again, as a group consensus with professional input, is to go to 2 and a 5-foot.
No, I agree, because you're absolutely right. And that you buy a 4-inch tree, you're going to get a root bound, you know, or one that was grown in the ground and cut up, where the roots were cut up. So that's not going to be as healthy a tree. I think, but I just want to point out that we're making things, where on day one, when you, you know, cut the ribbon or whatever, it might not be as pretty as, you know, which is what I think, you know, the original code called for. This is going to be a more sustainable, better product
Right.
in the end. And that's what's important to me. Second thing, and I can't remember if it's in this one or the next one, but as far as the having the arborist, you know, pronounces a tree dead or dying or whatever. Explain to me a little bit about how that's applied. And like, for example, I have a 50-ish, 60-ish foot cottonwood behind my house that is dead.
Right.
I don't need an arborist to tell me that. It's been dead for, you know, I'll keep waiting another spring and hopefully some leaves will spring out, but...
I'm not sure if cottonwood is on our list of trees, but I'll give you the...
But if it were, whatever, yeah.
I'll give you the example that we're going through with the Pecan, with the Grove development or the Nixon track development. So there are a great number of those trees that are questionable. But, and we have an arborist and they have an arborist. Obviously, it is in their best interest to deem the tree not survivable or not doable. It's just, you know, keeping everybody honest, making sure that the arborist does seal the plan that's submitted and then we verify, just making sure that what they're going to clear is absolutely necessary to clear.
Sure. Yeah, and what I'm talking about is if I've got a clearly dead tree behind my house and I don't want it to fall on my neighbor's house or neighbor's car or my car or whatever, I mean, do I have to hire an arborist to come out and tell me that it's dead?
You can call, you can call our, you can call Terry Moore's division. We have an arborist on staff.
Okay. But we need to do that ahead of time and not, okay?
Not if it's an imminent public threat.
Right.
Okay.
And we can, we've worked with the people already on the situation. It's causing foundation problems. It's about to fall on the neighbors.
Sure.
It's a common sense approach with fellow staff working together.
Yeah, I just don't want to create, you know, solve one problem, create another one.
We'll work with everybody.
Counselperson Meyer.
Thank you. I just wanted to give a shout out to our Parks and Tree Board because they, they had a lot of great discussion on this and really were so thoughtful on everything and brought up all the important points. But also, a shout out to someone who's sitting in our audience right now. And Luke, I'm sorry, I don't know your last name, but Luke was so helpful in all of this and gave us so much great information input. So thank you very much.
Okay, public hearing time. Do we have anyone signed up for a public hearing? Open the public hearing. Close the public hearing.
Move to approve.
Second.
So counselperson Lee and counselperson Meyer for the second. Any other discussion? Counselperson Fosser?
Um, yes. Do you need us to speak? The modification of the imperperatuity? Okay, so you'll need an amendment there. My other question is for all of our code amendments that we're doing right now, I would prefer them to not go on the consent agenda next time. I just want as much, I know we can pull them and I'll pull them if they need to go to consent, but for everything code-related, just as much public input as possible, please. So that's my second request. You can abide or not. I'll pull it if not.
Okay, so there is, you should probably make a formal request to amend.
Yeah, I'll move, I'll make a friendly, I'll move that we make a friendly amendment to add the language to imper, to change the language from keep it alive for a year to keep it alive in perpetuity.
Do you accept said friendly amendment?
I accept.
Counselperson Lee? Okay. Counselperson Meyer?
Yes.
Okay, so the friendly amendment is accepted. So we are now voting on the amended ordinance 2025-11 with the addition of keeping the tree alive in perpetuity. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Motion carries unanimously. Move on to 11G, conduct a public hearing. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance number 2025-12, amending the code of ordinance as related to chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Code, Chapter 10 definitions, and move to include on the February 25th, 2025 consent agenda for the second reading.
This one's a little easier. Basically, it's just adding some definitions for clarification of native plants, invasive plants, and then certified arborists. And again, as Councilman Myers touched on, that was a lot of input by different boards and again, Mr. Thompson and other arborists. So any questions?
Madam City Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for public? Okay, I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. Move to approve.
Second.
Okay, so we have a move to, a motion to approve from counselperson Plunkett, a second from counselperson Meyer. Any other discussion, counsel? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, that was to pass first reading of ordinance 2025-12 and it passes unanimously. And move on to item 11H, conduct a public hearing. Consider an act on the first reading of ordinance 2025-13, amending the code of ordinance as related to chapter 14, the Bastrop Building Block B3 Technical Manual, Table 2103, Preferred Plant List, and move to include on the February 25th, 2025 consent agenda for the second reading.
Again, this was the work really went into, go back. This is kind of our original list. That wasn't really a good list. Didn't really describe things in categories. This is the new list, which I know the screen's hard to read. We both, basically broke it down in different sections of native trees. The items in green are from the original list. So a lot of discussion back and forth on the types of trees. So again, with, again, a lot of discussion is these are the trees that we're saying that are native trees. Then we have invasive trees and then invasive landscaping plants and grasses, acceptable non-native plants, landscaping plants, and native landscaping grass. So again, the main focus would be on the native trees. These are the ones that are not in green are the additional trees we're trying to save. So you see a pretty, pretty substantial increase in types of trees. Before it was just size and the few in green, but now we're adding the ones that aren't highlighted. Any questions?
Counselperson Fosser.
Sorry. Please tell me what the green is again.
So the green is, was our, from the original list. So the green is from our original list that was, was in the ordinance already. The ones that are in white are the additional trees. And we had some that were native trees at part of discussion, like the Chinese pistachio. We realized it was an invasive tree.
Right, but it's on this, it's on this list now as to be adopted. We want that.
But it's under an invasive tree. So we're identifying now the different types of trees.
Gotcha. Okay. Vitex is an invasive tree? Is it really, Luke? Okay. Thank you to, man, so many people came out multiple, multiple times to speak on this, on the agenda, even when it got pushed, like the entire Audubon canceled their meeting and came here. The Master Gardeners and Naturists and Native Plant Society, Luke, I mean, thank you. This was like a really, not, this list is educational just by reading it. So it is an educational tool now and I think we'll all be better informed. And just thank you, Luke. I know you put tons of time in this.
Well, this will be an ongoing process of educating the public in general.
Okay, any other questions? Okay, Madam City Secretary, do we have anyone signed up for the public hearing? I'm going to open the public hearing. I'm going to close the public hearing. Counsel.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion to approve from counselperson Meyer and a motion to second from counselperson Fosser. I looked at the little lights thing over here and almost said counselperson Kirkland because it's the one on the far left, but anyway. We have a motion on the table to approve the first reading of ordinance 2025-13. Any additional discussion, counsel? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed say nay. Okay, motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, counsel.
For the next three items, 11I, 11J, and 11K, the chair has the ability in our rules of procedure to pull items on agenda unless counsel decides they want to consider them anyway. These three items, I'm proposing that we pull because the negotiations between the city manager and the developer are not yet concluded. Okay, so now we're going to move on to the last item for individual consideration. Item 11L, consider an act on resolution number 2025-39, supporting the application for housing tax credits for the proposed development Pine Creek Senior Apartments for 52 senior age restricted low-income housing tax credit units to be located on Lover's Lane, south of SH 71. Confirming support for the application, authorizing the city manager to grant a $250 in no-sense reduction in fees for the development to meet all program criteria.
Jump of the gun. Mayor pro temp, counsel. Yes, this is a request for support for Pine Creek Senior Apartments. I'll hear in a second. I'll turn it over to Tisha. She's going to work through the, her PowerPoint and show the area. This isn't uncommon for us to submit these letters of support or resolutions of support. We do it, we've done it for settlement, for rehabilitation in 2023. That project never moved forward after that and there's no binding for these resolutions. It's just letter, just supporting the project. We also did one in, I believe in 2020, for the Hunter's Crossing Apartments. The, the ones closer, I can't remember which one's which, but the ones closer to Hunter's, the ones around the corner from, one of them's on 70, or one of them's closer, the one away from 304, let's say that, the one away from 304, closer to the China Buffets. We did a letter of support for them and that one actually came to fruition and went through the project. So again, I'm going to turn this over to Tisha with EPG and she's going to go through this PowerPoint.
So before you get started, how many slides do you have?
I will keep it brief.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank y'all so much for giving me the opportunity to speak and sorry for jumping the gun. So as I, as mentioned, my name is Tisha Vadia with Elizabeth Property Group. We're an affordable housing owner-operator developer, local to Texas. Just to give an overview of the project itself, this is called Pine Creek Senior Apartments. We're proposing a 52-unit, three-story elevator product located at Lover's Lane and Highway 71. What we're here today is to seek a resolution of support for our 9% competitive tax credit application process. This is simply a, you know, again, a resolution of support from city council that's a requirement for our tax credit application. We understand there's several steps involved, you know, to get through, you know, city planning approval and permit processes and all of that. This is really to continue on with our process with the TDHCA and the tax credits. So, you know, just to give a highlight and overview of where we are in the process, we submitted a pre-application in early January. As we rank in our region, we're actually the highest ranked and most competitive site in our region. So if we receive this resolution of support, we would be the number one ranked project in, in our region and we would get the allocation, you know, accordingly. You know, assuming we meet all the other thresholds and everything as well. You know, we've had an opportunity to meet with several members from the city of Bastrop, hearing their concerns and things they want to see from the site, you know, in terms of layout and everything. And we tried to do our best thus far to accommodate accordingly. So some things that we want to make sure that we point out at the stage is, you know, we understand that the city of Bastrop has grown considerably, which is really amazing, but there is a need for attainably priced housing. And so this is something that we feel like is a project that is really needed. And specifically, this would be, again, 52 units for 55-plus. So it would be age-restricted seniors projects. The second thing is, we just heard a lot about trees. We, there's a lot of trees on this site. We would not be, you know, whatever, cutting down any of the trees. Our intention would be to preserve the trees. And then third is, you know, traffic along Lover's Lane, that was something that was brought up as a concern. We've already done a preliminary traffic study with our engineer, CBD, and their initial report is that given the size of the project, the boutique nature of our seniors project, this would not have a significant impact on the existing traffic on Lover's Lane. So sort of alleviating the concerns, the initial concerns there are potential concerns of bringing a new development on the site. So just a couple, there are several slides here about us, which I'm happy to go into if you'd like, but just to talk about the project, this is a basic site layout. You can see here, again, the top 2.2 acres. There's a lot of, there's a lot of trees here, you know, as you can see, we're, our intention is to preserve all of that. And we're going to build a little bit below so that, you know, again, there's, you're not building near the, near the street itself, but just a little bit further down. The site will have amenities that are going to be catering towards the senior population. Other things we want to consider here, you know, again, this is, this wouldn't be a subsidized project or, you know, it's, it's really more about attainable housing, right? So people that are on a fixed income for the 55-plus population. This is sort of a rough timeline that we're, that we're talking about here. So, you know, where we are right now is that February 2025 timeline. So again, we're seeking this resolution of support just so that we can keep going forward. As we continue on, the next major milestone that we would be facing would be to get the actual tax credit award by July. And then we would hope to close on the land by the end of the year. And then we would break ground by January of 2026. These are just some projects in our portfolio, just to give you an idea of the quality of assets that we have. You know, so we've got a couple of family assets in Lubbock, Texas. We've got some single-family for rent in Dallas and then a property in Commerce. And then these are examples of things that we built in the past. So this is just to give everyone comfort and clarity on, again, the standard by which we build too. And that's really, you know, we want to make sure that when we enter any market, we're collaborative in the community that we're coming to. We want, you know, we're long-term owners. We're not just going to build and then exit. You know, I plan to be here for a long time. And so we just want you guys to know that what we build is going to be of high caliber and high quality. Again, more renderings, again, just to kind of show the high-quality nature. Some interior renderings. We've included some references from different cities and other organizations that we've partnered with on other projects in the past, just for your perusal. Any questions?
Any questions, counsel? Counselperson Lee?
Thank you. I don't have, well, I do have one question, but thank you so much for bringing this to our community. I'm really praying that this goes... So thank you for bringing this project. I was looking at the age restriction and was like, oh, man, I turned 54 this year. I could have lived in this complex. In 2026, I may need you. But, um, thank you so much for bringing this to our community. I'm, I'm praying that it all goes well. Um, this is, so my question was about the trees. The second part of the lot where you're right now on paper saying it's going to be park space, is there any thought or consideration at this point that you would need to build out more? Because I would think that those units are going to fill up pretty quick.
This top part?
Yeah.
We won't build up there.
You won't build up there at all?
No.
It has, uh, it has flood and geographic.
Okay, okay.
So, yeah, as you can see, it's kind of adjacent to Gill's Branch and so this bottom portion's going to be in some flood plain and then also there's, there's some, um, I guess like terrain-wise that kind of make it a little, yeah, there you go, thank you. Um, that make it kind of difficult to build in that southern portion. But I would assume that y'all would do a second phase to the south, correct? Or to this?
There would be.
The green area to the south?
Okay, if we needed to expand. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Councilperson Foster.
Okay, this is awesome. I have a few questions though, please. Um, so we are in the midst, we actually just changed our parking requirements to require one, uh, parking, onsite parking spot per bedroom. Could this site, because I see you have 52, uh, parking spots, um, budgeted for this. Could you, could the site support more?
Sure, absolutely.
One per bedroom? I didn't do the math on that, but that's, that, that will probably be, that will be the code once you get your application rolling.
Yes, definitely.
So I wanted to give you a heads up about that.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. We'll make sure to accommodate that.
For, um, can you go to the slide, uh, with the, the money, the rent? I got a question about that one. And hi, I see y'all in the audience, y'all on the slides. Um, for, I'm going to look at it, I'm mine. We, I got it a little bit different way. So one bedroom, one bath, did, do you have it listed as that? One bedroom, one, so that would be rent limitation. The one bedroom, one bath, there's three of those? At seven, oh, there's, okay, one bedroom, one bath, there are three of those at 30%?
Uh.
Seven at 50%?
Mm-hmm.
Do you have that? Is that on here somewhere?
Um, here?
There's one on the slide before, two, two slides back. Give it to you already. There? Is that where it's at?
Kind of. It's a little bit different in our packet.
Oh, okay.
So there are three, one bedroom, bath, and to qualify, you would make 30% of the AMI, right? So three at 30%.
Yeah, yeah. So basically this table outlines, so if you're a one-person household to qualify for a 30% AMI, you'd have to meet 26,460.
And that would be the maximum you could make?
That's the maximum.
That's the maximum you can make. So for, because the rents aren't on, they're in the packet, but they're not on your screen. So that would be $650 per month.
The rent is on the table right below, so the rent, the implied rent for that, um, 26,460 would be 708.
Okay, it's a little bit different in our packet. So there.
Oh, I'm sorry.
And there are, so there are three units at 30% and then seven at 50% and then 22 at, uh, 60%. So that's the, that's the main slide. So there's.
I want you to do the reverse math on that, Councilmember Foster, because that continues to be where we consistently get beat up.
Oh, oh, I'm sorry. I think this might be net of the utility allowance, so the, the rents here are gross. Um, so what happens is that there's a utility allowance, it's factor, that's like a, you know, what we, um, are budgeted to, or what the resident's budgeted to pay for, again, their utilities.
Okay.
And so I think the table that you're looking at is what their net rent would be.
Gotcha.
Yeah. So.
So what is area median income? What did you calculate that? What is area median income here?
Um, it's the 26,460 for 30% AMI.
No, 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 total. What is the area median income? That you multiplied times 30 to get that number? It's blank number times 30% equals this rent.
Sure.
Is that number divided by 30%? I can't get a calculator.
Sorry.
You guys should have a table.
Yeah, it's in the, it's in the packet. You've got to find the page.
Eighty-eight, 200.
Per year?
Twenty-six, 460 divided by point three?
Okay, so, and, um, most seniors, how much, how much do you, how much is a senior who received, who perhaps didn't work there and, uh, that was a, she was a stay-at-home mom, for example? Their social security disability income is?
Four hundred.
It's about 700 and some.
About 700.
So it's right at this. So, and we have a great number of those populous in Bastrop, in our senior population. So, um, while this is assistance, it's still only three apartments that are going to assist that level.
For the one bedroom? And then another three at the two-bedroom, two-bath?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. And so, and we feel this at the settlement because the settlement, they just did some massive adjustments. And the adjustments are over $900 a month for a one-bedroom. They are super struggling, super struggling, when the entire combined social security income of even somebody who has enough credits but perhaps didn't earn a high wage while they were in the working population are still at about 1,200 to 1,400 in social security monthly. So I just, I, I think it's a worthwhile project. I think it's a start to get somewhere, but we've got some serious work to do if we're really going to be marching down a path where we really want to be able to help our seniors.
And all we're asked to do today is to provide a letter of support?
Yes.
And $250 reduction in fees?
Yes.
So how about we do that?
Yes.
I'm not done with my questions.
Oh, no.
Yes, I support this. I just have some questions. And it's probably, is also a question in our packet. So it says, what percentage of units have ADA features?